Seven o'clock, I call the common council meeting to order. Have roll call.
Mr. Schrader.
Here.
Mrs. Schatzinger.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Gallups.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mrs. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Wirtch.
Here.
Mr. Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for the blessing of this day that we can gather here to do the business of the city. We ask that you be with all the leaders, all the change that's happening, the challenge of the situation, that you give them guidance, wisdom, insight, help them to always keep focused on the common good, and let all the decisions here be a blessing to all. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Is there any public comment? Alright, first order of business then is a proclamation. Designating May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and observance of National Police Week from May 10th through May 16th, 2020, in the city of Ripon. Whereas Police Week's origin began on October 1st, 1962, when President, or when US President John F. Kennedy signed Public Law 87-726, a joint resolution of the 87th Congress. And the act reads pursuant to 36 USC 136-137, the President designates May 15th of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas in 1994, US President William J. Clinton signed Public Law 103-322, a joint resolution of the 103rd Congress directing that the flag of the United States be flown at half-mast on all government buildings on May 15th. And whereas in 2019, the common council of the city of Ripon passed a proclamation establishing the recognition of National Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week as an annual event in the city of Ripon. And whereas each year during Police Week, communities across the United States hold a memorial service in remembrance of police officers who have made the supreme sacrifice for their communities. And whereas it is appropriate that we take each time, take time each year to honor our law enforcement professionals, understanding that police work is inherently dangerous, recognizing that on average, more than 58,000 law enforcement officers are assaulted each year, and that one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 53 hours. And whereas since the first known line of duty death in 1791, more than 24,199 US law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas so far in 2020, 61 United States police officers, sheriffs, park rangers, correctional officers, immigration and customs agents, and US marshals have died in the line of duty. Therefore, the city of Ripon mayor and common council members do hereby declare May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the observance of National Police Week from May 10th through May 16th, 2020, in the city of Ripon. And the observance will include the following. Flags are to be flown at half-mast on May 15th. The official flag of the National Law Enforcement Memorial is to be flown at City Hall all week. And all uniformed police department personnel are to wear a black mourning band across the uniform badge during National Police Week in remembrance of the officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Proclaimed this 12th day of May, 2020.
Move to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Proclamation is approved. Next is, there are a motion to accept the reports from the standing committees and staff.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reports are accepted. Next would be approving the consent calendar and the common council minutes for the three meetings in April. Motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. I will now open the floor to a public hearing for the proposed discontinuance and vacation of Aiken Street. The time is now 7:07. Lori, do you have any details on that?
Sure, I can give a little background on the process to date. Back on March 23rd, the council approved a resolution initiating the proposed discontinuance of Aiken Street. After that, the matter was referred to the plan commission, and plan commission recommended approval of the vacation. The next step is to hold the public hearing tonight. We've also notified all of the landowners abutting the Aiken Street of the public hearing tonight. And we also published it in the newspaper for three weeks. The next step is a list pendants to be filed, which is something that our city attorney's office is working on. And then a copy of the resolution initiating the proposed discontinuance and vacation is delivered to the Secretary of Transportation, and that has been done. So after the public hearing, then there is a final resolution that the council would need to approve, and that is listed next on the agenda after the public hearing.
Let's just clarify for the listening public. In an effort to make sure that we properly described the street to be vacated, we did a search. It went back to the 1800s as to what in fact consists of Aiken Street. And as we looked into it further, coming up with a legal description became somewhat complicated because of the fact that the entire area, the entire parcel was designated by an individual to the city to be utilized as a street. And obviously, the entire park was not intended, or never was, a street. So the effort was made to hire MSA to legally describe the street, and we have now come to the conclusion that we will do that consistent with the sidewalk and the paved surface to be a 50-foot right-of-way that will be vacated, which if in fact you vote in favor of that, would end up 25 to the neighboring properties to the east, and the other 25 feet going to the city of Ripon as the owner of the property that is adjacent thereto. The list pendants, as the city administrator pointed out, is part and parcel of the process. So it is on the agenda tonight for an action item. I'm going to be asking that that be tabled for 30 days so that we can complete the filing of the list pendants to notify everyone that the street of 50 feet, now that we've determined the area to be discontinued and vacated, will then be properly before the public, before a final action by the common council at the next hearing. Any questions regarding that? Yes, John?
Could we get like a map that shows, because you're talking
Yep.
Existing lot line?
Yep.
25 feet?
And another 25 feet.
And another 25.
Correct, correct. Yes, we will, we will provide that, and that's why we're moving forward tonight, because it, everyone knows what we're talking about. We're talking about Aiken Street, which is that pathway between. But we want to make sure that we've touched all the bases before we pass the resolution. So yes, a map will be attached.
Is there any public comment on this matter? No? Hearing no public comment, I will close the public hearing portion at 7:11. Our first action item is the discontinuance and vacation of Aiken Street. Open up for discussion if there's any questions on this matter before we consider to table it for the 30 days.
I'm satisfied that we can just table it to the next council meeting, which is, how long is it?
That would
June 9th?
Okay, so it's probably pretty close, yeah. Approximately 30.
Tableing till the next
Correct.
Meeting, not the 30 days. So
That would be the action item.
I have a lot of neighbors that are complaining about this with Tigert Street being closed off and then closing, now closing Aiken off. So could we get something as far as ideas of what we're going to do with Tigert? Does it say permanent closure? Is there any way to open it up to one-car traffic? Something we can do besides just ignore it?
Ward?
What we have discussed in the past, just to bring you up to date, is through the Engineers Net, they recommended that we not open it up for traffic because of the deterioration underneath. We have discussed making that into a pedestrian crossway for bicyclists or pedestrian foot traffic in that area. And Mike Aronberg has brought us layouts of different ways of doing that aspect. The way we are by now, it's been several years since this has been closed off, the public is used to driving around that block. We've talked with the chiefs, police and fire, and they see no problem with it. So that's kind of where we are, but it won't be a permanent closure because, you know, you never know, at a later date, we may be able to come up with some money where we can fix that bridge and reopen it at that time. That's, that's kind of what we had proposed, you know, through the park group and the previous council.
And now we're closing off the next street, and therein lies the problem. So, and I've had several people in the neighborhood just not like it, so I'm voicing that for them. That hopefully we can look at doing something with Tigert, maybe have something. I don't even know where we're going to get the money from. You know, I mean, I understand this. I mean, it's, but just look into doing something with it besides ignoring it.
It's never been ignored. That's not the correct term I would use for, we've discussed this through many meetings through the Aiken Parks Committee, subcommittees discussed it. So the word ignored, I don't believe is a correct term, because we have discussed it, we have gone over it, we have had the engineers look at the cost of it, and like you just mentioned, the cost is the key factor. 450, does that sound right, Ward?
I was looking, I thought it was like around 350 for that one, wasn't it, Mike?
Sorry, I don't
Because there were the two of them, the Jefferson Street and Tigert altogether, and I think it was right around the 350 mark.
It was 300 to 500, depending on whether you
Rebuild or
Did rebuild it or built a totally new bridge.
If you brought in a cast, or if you brought in a
Right.
Culvert system and things like that, and
Yep.
Plain and simple, we didn't have the funds for it. The key difference is that that road is closed versus vacated. Aiken Street that we're referring to is going to be vacated. That's a whole different term and a whole different attitude that that street will be gone.
Yes.
To no longer be there anytime in the future. Correct, Bud?
Correct, and we've done that for public safety purposes at this time. I think it's important that it does stay on the agendas, and we have done that. And moving forward, one option may be narrowing that street, obviously restricting vehicle traffic across that crossing and leaving it as pedestrian. That would be the next step that at least has been discussed. That doesn't mean that's going to happen, but narrowing is different than discontinuing. So it'd still be a thoroughfare.
Alright, is there any other discussion on this matter for the evening?
Like to make a motion to table the item for 30 days.
Second, Ed.
Could we amend that motion to table until the June 9th meeting?
Almost
June 9th, it might not be.
We don't need 30. We just need it to the June 9th meeting, to make sure we file the list.
And 30 days would put us at June 10th.
There we go.
Sure. Table to June 9th.
Thank you.
Has been approved for motion and second.
Second.
Is there
No debate on that.
Discussion on
No, no debate on
Nope, no debate on tabling. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No problem.
Next action item is the columbarium. On April 14th, the council requested that the purchase agreement be revised to allow flowers and transfer back to the city. The city's insurance carrier has confirmed coverage for the damage liability issues. Additional costs are also spelled out on the updated purchase agreement, which you all received in your packets. Phil?
I can also say that this, this agreement is, and the language is consistent with what was looked at and talked about at the Public Works Committee when this was brought forward to the council for approval.
I noticed in the agreement that one floral memorial may be attached, and that's good. We had talked about that, but was there not another subject we were, was there two subjects we were trying to
The transfer.
Transfer, okay.
Joeline?
It's just, it's interesting that it says a vase may be purchased and installed by the monument company, but then a bullet point above that, it just says no, no vases, which is just contradicting, I think, I think people would understand.
There's two different kinds.
I assume not.
To get it attached, you have to attach it on the screws that are in there.
Mm-hmm.
It's more of a hanging. Vases can be placed on the top. We really didn't want them on the top, so
Would it be easier just to say no, only approved items are, you know, are? I think it's fine. Is it also interesting that if, you know, someone is a military member, that a flag or, or no emblem like that is not appropriate? I think if this is common, among other places, then I approve that, but I, I do think that there has been a history of honoring members of the military with
That's correct. So the members of the military will attach their pieces to the side of the unit. So this would be similar to the unit. There's not much place on the face plate, but these can be attached to the side for the militaries. And they can be a certain size. I went through this with Christie. Four-day military
Do we call that out anywhere, Mike? We don't, but we It probably wouldn't hurt to call it out, for military burials. Some, just add that line, I think that, because we say no flags if we're going to allow military, you say then they can place a flag at that location?
I would take the flags out.
Okay, just take flags out, then allow military
That's okay with you guys?
Yeah. That would, that would make sense in that, military have the right to do that. It's understood, I guess, in the industry, unless you want it specifically called out. But yeah, removing flags would probably be a good idea, because where are y'all, so you're putting the flag? You know, you're not going to have a place to put a flag.
Bud, can we, can we approve this with a noted change regarding the flags?
Yes. Yes.
Don't move.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the columbarium project with the change of the flags. Is there any discussion?
We're not approving the project, we're approving the agreement.
Right, the agreement, yeah.
My apologies.
It was covering, being a little generic there.
We've already approved the
The agreement that's in front of you.
Approving the agreement, my apologies. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next action item is the update on the COVID-19 employment policy. Turn to Lori for this.
At the last council meeting, there were a couple of suggested revisions to the policy, and that included adding the hotspots in Wisconsin, and also the addition of curbside pickup services at the library. So those two changes were added to the policy.
And do we need a motion to approve those changes? Is there a motion to approve those changes?
Motion.
Moved, is there a second? Seconded. Any discussion?
I think the big concern with COVID-19 stuff, the virus has been known to last on surfaces for a good amount of time, and if we're going to library to hand out literature of sorts, you know, books, whatever, I'd like to figure out a way how we can ensure that these items will come back to the library clean without spreading this virus if in fact anybody in the city has contracted it.
I can answer that. The library has a policy, once the item comes back, it's quarantined in a room for a week, which should be more than enough time for paper materials to lose contamination if it is contaminated in the first place. So they do have that policy in place already. So once the item is returned, it is separated for a week.
Is there a timeline in returning? I know some communities have let people keep the materials.
Initially, when the library was completely closed, they discontinued all return dates and encouraged people to keep the item until the library opened again.
Till it opened again.
But now they have, I don't know if it's their standard
Standard.
Return times.
Thank you.
Or they may have some altered return times, but the item will not recirculate for that. Any other discussion on the changes to the COVID policy?
I assume that the change announced yesterday about businesses being able to open with limitations, that shouldn't affect anything in here. Is that correct?
Correct.
Are there just questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or approved? Our first discussion item of the evening is the healthcare benefits. At our last meeting, council member Split requested this item be put on the agenda, just for a summary of health insurance and wages for city staff. So I'll start with John.
Yeah, I asked for it to be on the agenda just for our four new council members, so they can get a handle on what we offer to our city employees. And I have about six or seven questions. I know most, if not all, the answers are in the pamphlet we got, you know, with our papers, but I still feel that we should, I should ask them, so we can be a little transparent for the citizens out there. First question is number of non-union employees covered and number of union employees covered.
We have eight employees in the police department union, and the rest of the employees, which would be 35, and this would just be the ones covered under the health insurance. The other 35 would be non-union.
Costs for employee per month regardless of the plan picked for non-union employees and for union employees.
And that would be $100 for the union employees and $80 for the non-union employees. That was just increased on January 1st of this year from $60 to $80.
Total cost to the city for the healthcare insurance per year?
And that would be the last page of your packet, based on the 43 employees that we have that are on the health insurance. It does show the breakdown between how many are single, double, and families. And it shows the monthly premium, and so multiplying the number of employees times the monthly premium gives us our monthly insurance cost of $74,000. And to date, we've paid 380, so for the year, we are projecting 902,000. Employees with their contributions do offset a part of that cost. It's about, I think it was $43,000.
The cost per month for the family plan and the cost per month for the single plan, I'll just skip the two in between.
That's on that same sheet. Single, $766 a month. Double Double, fifteen thirty-three a month. Employee and children is one thousand three eighty. Family is two thousand two forty-six.
Is that our actual cost? And then do we deduct the eighty and a hundred?
That would be the total premium.
Total premium, okay.
Yeah. So the employee share would reduce that cost to the city.
Amount of the deductible.
For single, it's thirty-five hundred, and for families, it's seven thousand. We do have an HRA, a health reimbursement account, that will reimburse up to three thousand per person with a maximum of three per family.
So in other words, the employee is really on the hook for five hundred?
Correct.
Okay. How do they get reimbursed? Do they bring in receipts or bills?
They, it's administered through a third party. It's EBC. And they do have to submit their EOBs to EBC to get that reimbursement. They do have to pay the bills themselves first, and they can get reimbursed. If they don't request reimbursement, then they don't get it.
And you call that a health?
Reimbursement account.
Account. Who funds that account?
That is funded, it's similar to an HSA, but the difference between an HSA, Health Savings Account, and a Health Reimbursement Account. Health Savings Account, the employer puts the money into an account, and that is, belongs to the employees. In our case, we only reimburse them if they actually incur the costs. So for an employee that doesn't use the medical insurance at all for the year, they wouldn't receive any of that. It's only if you utilize the medical.
So it's the employee that puts in?
No, the city, yeah.
Okay, so the city puts in.
Correct.
Oh, and then the last one is, I mean, this is a huge cost to the city, and it's not just Ripon, it's everywhere in the nation. I'm just throwing this out to the council that maybe we should look into bidding out the healthcare every year. I mean, does that make a difference? Does it not make a difference? Is it easier to just let it ride with the increase? Just questions like that.
Our health insurance agent does go out, we can get preliminary quotes from insurance companies, and we do that routinely every year. If we, if any of those quotes come back looking promising, then we have to have our employees fill out a whole questionnaire for each employee. This last year, our medical provider, we had budgeted a six percent increase. They came back at three percent if we, if we went with them and did not have our employees fill out all the questionnaires and go through that process. But typically, we do, our insurance agent, which is the Djerk Agency, they will ask for quotes from all, everyone we can get. Blue Cross, Blue Shield, you know, United Healthcare, Network Health, WEA Trust. So they do reach out to everyone.
The question I had that was, I read an article a couple of months ago about Oshkosh, and the city of Oshkosh bid out their health insurance, and they saved either seven or nine percent. I mean, it was a huge amount last year, so.
And we at times do switch. If it looks promising, then we will go through that process and do that. And we have, we've probably done that, we've only been with United Healthcare for three years now. So, or with Anthem. Prior to that, we were with United Healthcare.
Do you budget for a, like a specific percentage increase year to year? Kind of a target number, like four percent or whatever?
Yeah, we talked to our insurance agent again, and they can usually give us an idea of what the trend is.
Okay.
And that's why last year, we budgeted six percent. That was what trend was. Luckily, we came in below that, so.
Because who knows what'll happen next year with that?
Yes, with all of this going on, it's hard to say.
Okay.
There's been good and bad with that over the years. It's came in lower, it's came back, oh my God, surprisingly higher, depending on situations going on. So over the years, it's, you do the best you can to come up with that target projection, and then when we really get in the numbers for budget time.
Okay.
Any other discussion on healthcare benefits? And we will move on. Relevant COVID-19 information for our community. Councilmember Schottzinger, would you like to start with this?
Sure, I just thought as long as we are officially under the, you know, declared state that we are, that we should, and I know many people in the community do tune in to watch these, that we should remind people that if you need help, whether it's, you know, you need help with food or what have you, feeling lonely, there can be people that could call you. Quite a variety of things you could need help with, or you want to offer to volunteer. There is a website that this community, many people, volunteers are putting together, so just a reminder then. It's ripponcovid19.org. And also, you know, still, there are places in the community that have stepped up to accept donations if there are manufactured personal protective equipment. Grant, pack, and ship downtown is accepting those. And places for cloth masks, for example, are being accepted at our Savior's UCC Church, as well as Ripon Community Church. And I will say that a lot of, it's been inspiring to see the help that has been able to be provided in the community. One quick announcement is that there is currently a public service announcement competition, and we are calling on, when I say we, the task force that many people around this table are a part of, the Ripon Community COVID Task Force. So any creatives, videographers, artists, poets are invited to create a public service ad. The hope is that this lighthearted, feel-good campaign will inspire people to actively take this recommended precaution, and winning creations will receive one hundred dollar, fifty dollar, and twenty-five dollar gift certificates for local businesses. That's all I have now, but I welcome anyone else to share.
Anyone else? Very good. Moving on to project updates and staff reports. Do you have any updates?
Not.
All right. Police Department? No. Public Works? Yes, we do.
Road construction, I'm planning for the city. I did receive the notice to proceed today. We'll start June first on those constructions. So residents and businesses that are affected by that will receive a letter within the week, not this week, throughout the next week or so. Notifying them of the process, businesses downtown, we shouldn't see more than a day disruption. So there should be access, there will be access actually most of the time with those roads. Yes?
Did you do a special brush pick up last week at all or wait till this week after those? All the wind and such that last weekend?
No.
Just wait for this week?
Yep.
I just noticed there was a big influx this week on curbs, to me, I noticed.
Typical this time of the year. We see that first part, first couple of months here when people want to get out, plus now they're at home. So we've seen around, last month, around a little over eighty pickups, plus whatever we've seen in between this month, we're in the seventies. That would be typical for this time of the year. It'll fade off a little bit. And then it'll pick up as the trees start hitting the people in the face when they're mowing. So then we'll start to see some pickup from that standpoint, and then they'll fall again, and then it'll be resolved.
You said June first, is that, are you going to start with the downtown, the Watson Street, Fond Lake Street?
They're going to start on the cement work.
Cement work?
So all the cement work will be done for the streets first. And then the piping up on Highland will occur during that time also. There's a section that they got to do some sewer work in. And then after the cement work's done, then they'll come in, and then they'll start the milling and stuff like that. I'm not sure which roads they're going to pick, John.
Well, yeah, okay.
Some are two-inch milling overlay, one here, and then some are pulverized, and those are the ones that are going to take about three, four hours, that there could be a disruption during the day. They typically start at six-thirty in the morning, so it should, all things perfect. It should be almost done by the time downtown gets rolling.
Just a concern here, that big dip in the road over leading out of Ripon.
That's the town of Ripon?
Yeah, the one that's leading out of Ripon. Is there?
The state is informed of that, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. We talked about it last year. The Ransom Street parking lot, those pine trees where you walk down? Nothing's been done with those yet?
Once we get some open time, that can be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I do not have any appointments for this meeting, however, do have a short message. As of yesterday, May eleventh, retail businesses have been allowed to reopen with limited capacities. When these businesses open, they may have requirements for face masks or other social distancing measures. These requirements may vary from business to business. I just ask everyone to follow these measures as laid out by those individual businesses. Those measures are there to protect you, the business's staff, and their other patrons. Be safe, stay healthy, and remember to be kind and considerate and respectful to others. At this time, I'll entertain future agenda items.
Got one. I'd like to address the issue of citizens walking in the middle of the streets with children and animals.
All right.
Is that okay to put on the agenda? I should be more specific, when sidewalks are available for use.
All right, and John?
I'd like to check on the House Brewery's stable roof project. I believe a bid was put in a couple of weeks ago, and we'd like to see if that's going to, if we have any money to get that fixed. And secondly, I'd like to go over or have Lud explain the city ordinance on junk in your front yards, too many cars in your yard, can you park a car behind your garage? Just, you know, messy front porches, just open front porch, not an enclosed porch, you know, things of that nature.
I think I'll have to agree with that.
And the procedure of, because I've already called Chief Walner on cars, and I believe he'll check out the cars, they're registered, but then we go to the code enforcer, I believe, and she does the, say, junk in the yard. And I just need, we need to balance that somehow.
Can do that, can make a presentation. Jolene?
I'd like to bring up for discussion a backyard chicken ordinance.
All right. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Adjourned. Seconded.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.